Welcome, welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. Please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a dynamic, to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to ask you to join me in a moment of silence as we reflect on the loss of Rebecca Becky Bright, vocal music teacher at Eastview School from November 1964 until she retired in July of 1992.
Next, we'll have some announcements from the board. I'll start by saying a number of us attended the Juneteenth and marched in the Juneteenth parade. Beautiful day, beautiful celebratory day, and just, you know, just an awesome time. Also, a couple of us were at the Maranick Avenue Winter Concert last Tuesday, and of course it was jam-packed and the students were outstanding. Spring, sorry, spring concert. Okay, I wrote winter too, okay. Spring concert, so Kane was there. He was there as well, so thank you for the correction. Anything else?
We were also at MAS, they did a nice Broadway, each class had designed a Broadway play, and they did a musical act with that play, which was really great, as well as the high school orchestra a few weeks ago.
Oh, yeah.
And we all marched in Memorial Day, which I was in charge of meetings with as well.
Yes, we did. Right, 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 right. Anything else?
I, do you think?
Go ahead, Reverend.
I attended the Church Street Annual Spelling Bee. I've done it a couple of times, and it's really a lot of fun. These little third graders are terrific. They are so adamant about getting every word right. They'll restart each word six times until they're positive. It was a lot of fun, and they had three sessions this year, and so I'm looking forward to continuing again next year. It is truly one of our greater events. I enjoy doing.
And just real quick, this past week, I had an opportunity to attend a conference of New York State Association for School Business Officials, which was a great event. That's coming in. And we had an opportunity to listen to the Commissioner of Education, which was really great, and which was really surprising. Towards the end of that, the Commissioner of Education, who didn't drop any names, dropped the name of Dr. Ann Bakara Teich, our Assistant Superintendent for Business. It was quite a surprise, but also nice to hear, and I managed to get a couple of minutes of the video, and I think just about a half a dozen of us sent it to her. So again, nice to hear, nice to hear that name, and again, know that the folks in our district have such close contact with people at the state and are known for having excellence. So, thank you.
I'll mention a few things. I attended the White Plains High School Celebration of Science and Engineering. Science research projects and science engineering projects were presented by our students. Seniors did live presentations, and then there were also boards, project boards for the students who were coming up. And it's always a real pleasure to see the research that our kids are engaged in, real hands-on learning that's going on. I also attended a webinar presented by the National School Boards Association on school safety, a New York State School Boards Association webinar on legal and policy implications of school board committees. And then over this weekend, I attended the director's meeting for the New York State School Boards Association, where we also had another presentation on safety. And it's always really good to hear things that make me feel good about the work we're doing here in the school district to keep our kids safe. It gives me a lot of confidence in the work that we're doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Next, we'll have our public hearing on the Districtwide Safety and Emergency Management Plan. It's attached for reading and comment, or, right?
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to thank Dr. Bakara Teich and the entire Districtwide Safety and Security Committee for all the hard work that goes into not only reviewing the plan annually, but also thinking about new and innovative ways we can get better to keep our school community safe and secure. And Sir Jake Harrison is here with us this evening. Sir, Jake is our liaison from Altairis. And Jake, I wasn't sure if you wanted to share anything, please feel free to take the podium. I know how much you love public speaking.
Evening, everybody. I'm usually more of a walker, talker, hands guy, but I see all this high-tech stuff going on, so I'm assuming I have to stay here. Try and stay here while I explain. Dr. Bakara Teich invited me tonight just to go give a brief overview of the Districtwide Safety Plan. This year, the New York State Department of Education handed down over 35 required amendments to the Districtwide Safety Plan, which is a lot. But I want to assure the board and the community at large that White Plains is already in compliance with all of these new requirements. So White Plains continues to be ahead of the curve in New York State when it comes to safety and security of our staff, our students, and our community within the schools. Some of the larger aspects of the plan that needed to be adjusted were regards to Alyssa's Law, which has to do with panic alarm systems and lockdown systems. They had updates in terms of post-incident response teams, the state of readiness of schools on a daily basis, visitor management systems, visitor management checks. Some of our, some of the changes were in our drilling and advanced drilling and changing our drills to be more, to have us more readily prepared for actual emergencies. And I want everyone to know that that's already happening. We've already advanced our drills beyond what the state requires. Our buildings are already in a state of preparedness every day. We use advanced visitor management systems every day. We already have post-incident response teams. We already have threat assessment response teams. And just because we have those things and because we are already in compliance with state regulations, it allows us to advance for, as Dr. Rick was talking about, I want the community to know and the board to know that you have put the right people in place when it comes to advancing the safety of the schools, our students, and our staff. I was asked this weekend in an event, hey, what do you think is the most important aspect of school safety? What's the one thing that every school can do to make us all safer? And really, it's the people. You can have all the operations plans, you can have all the equipment, all the technology, all the facility preparedness, you can have all the newest gadgets and gizmos, but if the people aren't there, then none of that matters. And here in White Plains, from administration all the way down to me, and everybody in between, food services, custodial staff, security staff, teaching staff, administrators, clerical staff, everyone in this district is involved. And I know that personally because I go out to the schools every day, and every day, somebody's grabbing my sleeve and saying, hey, we have a weird situation in this classroom. What do you think is the best way to make this safe? Or, hey, I was somewhere and I saw this, and I think this might make us a little bit safer. What do you think of this? And I take all that information, and I feed it up the line, and we sift through it, and we see what we can do and what makes sense for White Plains and how we can advance our safety. And White Plains continues to stay ahead of the curve. So while there were many, many changes this year, White Plains is already on top of it and far ahead of it. For example, tonight, White Plains Police Department is running a simulation exercise that they invited us to go to. Dr. Rick said, hey, Jake, I don't know what you're doing tonight, but go over there and be part of that, to kind of continue our improved communication with the police department. We've worked with them all year this year in a training program, a 16-week training program, and we've brought them all to speed in what we need in the schools. We're opening the communication with everybody throughout the city. It's not just the school members. It's the community members, it's our first responders, we're all in this together, and I want everyone to know and feel comfortable that the staff here that you've appointed, that you've elected, is doing their job. It is never done. We are never as safe as we want to be, but the work is getting done day to day. And I think the people in this room, the people in these buildings, the people in this community are a testament to that. So I can go through every step of the way, but every step of the changes in the Districtwide Safety Plan, but you guys have a nice celebration plan tonight, and I would eat up your whole night doing that. So if you have questions, you have concerns, feel free to call me, email me, text me, however you want to get in touch with me, and I will answer whatever questions you have. But tonight, I'd just like to say congratulations and good luck with whatever your future endeavors are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if I can just add from a board perspective, and thank you to Ann and your office, it's really helpful when we get that red line, you know, version, and we can really see clearly what the changes are. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bakara Teich. If there's any questions, we're happy certainly to answer them, and anytime any members of the community have any questions related to safety, security, protocols that are in place, or even thinking about the future, you can always reach out to us.
Okay, thank you. So that'll close our hearing on the Districtwide Safety and Emergency Management Plan. Next, we will go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a bittersweet evening in a lot of ways. This is the last official Board of Education meeting of the 2022-2023 academic year, and it's the meeting where we recognize, honor, and salute and celebrate our retirees as well. And what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to ask Mr. Pepper to take over for a few minutes as we all get a chance to watch a really a great presentation put together by Mrs. Tara Daley, as well as Ms. Kangrow, Mr. Pepper. So Scott?
Thank you, Dr. Rick, and thank you, trustees of the Board of Ed. I want to welcome everybody this evening on behalf of the superintendent and trustees of the Board of Education, and thank all of you for being here as we come together, the school community, to acknowledge and celebrate our retiring educators. You know, there are very few careers that can match the uniqueness and the value associated with what we do as educators. And when I use the term educators, I'm really speaking about everyone. Everyone who works in a school setting, from our teachers, our teaching assistants, our clerical support, our custodians, food service workers, security assistants, administrators, we are all educators. You know, as educators, we have an awesome responsibility, because each day, parents send us their two most valuable possessions. The first is their child, who we are charged with providing a safe and nurturing environment for them to grow and learn so they can become productive and contributing members of society. The second is their money, and they send that to us in the form of property taxes, which pay the salaries and benefits of all of us, and provide us with the ability to purchase the resources necessary, the textbooks, equipment, supplies, and the buildings to educate their children. It is a responsibility that educators do not take lightly. Tonight, we celebrate our retirees who have devoted a lifetime to this endeavor, many of them spending 30 or more years teaching, coaching, supporting, guiding, nurturing, mentoring, feeding, and caring for our students. These teachers have inspired students to pursue their passion, to respect the diversity among us, and to make educated decisions and good choices in life, and to be productive and contributing members to society. So how can we quantify the value of what our retiring educators have brought to society, brought really to this community? It truly is priceless. As our retirees approach the culmination of a lifetime of public service, we want to thank you for your dedication, for your selflessness, and for your legacy of excellence you have left for the rest of us to emulate. Please know that you have made a difference in the lives of thousands of children, and you have contributed in a positive way to the city of White Plains and the greater community. I'll now ask all of you to join me in saluting our retirees as a special tribute. Flat paws. And as a special tribute to them, Tara Daley, our Assistant Principal over at Highland says, did ask our retirees to send photos and a little sample of what they're planning to do in retirement. So we're going to show this video. It's about a three, three and a half minute video. So John, when you're ready.
Sitting in the morning sun, I'll be sitting in the evening sun, watching the ships roll in, and then I'll watch them roll away again, yeah. I'm sitting on the dock of the bay, watching the tide roll away. I'm just sitting on the dock of the bay, wasting time. I left my home in Georgia, headed for the crystal bay, because I've had nothing to do for, and look like nothing's gonna come my way. So I'm just gonna sit on the dock of the bay, watching the tide roll away. I'm sitting on the dock of the bay, wasting time. Look like nothing's gonna change, everything still remains the same. I can't do what ten people tell me to do, so I guess I'll remain the same. Sitting here resting my bones, and this loneliness won't leave me alone. Listen, two thousand miles I roam, just to make this dock my home. Now I'm just gonna sit at the dock of the bay, watching the tide roll away. I'm sitting on the dock of the bay, wasting time. Sitting in the morning sun, I'll be sitting in the evening sun, watching the ships roll in, and then I'll watch them roll away again, yeah. I'm sitting on the dock of the bay, watching the tide roll away. I'm just sitting on the dock of the bay, wasting time.
Turning it back over to Dr. Harrison. Okay. Thanks again to Ms. Daley, as well as Ms. Kangrow and Scott for pulling it all together. I couldn't, and I couldn't help but smile to see the plans that everybody has and the thoughts of the next step kind of in the adventure, which is, gosh, really amazing. One thing I did notice was lacking. You forgot to write in substitute teach anytime. Only halfway joking, Ms. Gentry. But, but again, congratulations to everybody, and my goodness, what a blessing, what a pleasure it's been to work alongside all of you. I remember when Ms. Gentry came up to me six years ago, I was like, do you know my name? Right? Right? I did. And you have done so many amazing things, all of you, for our children and for our community, and so many things that people will never even know about, except for the person who you impacted positively, and you changed the trajectory of what might have been a bad day, or it might have been a really dangerous place and road that that person maybe was going to travel down, and you stopped it, or you helped them. To be able to give your professional career to service to others, I think, is one of the greatest things that you could ask for, and I just want to, again, on behalf of everybody in our school district, especially our children, thank you for all of the many years of service that you put forward. We're really, I'm so grateful for all of you. Mr. Robert Badley.
Palmer Calderon. Eric Chen. Cynthia D'Amio. Mr. Richard Dillon. Spend more time with family, that's fantastic. I think that was what your plans were. I think you did. Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Michael Futter. Patty Gusa. Maxine Gentry. Congratulations, Ms. Gentry. Sonya Gordon. Patricia Hogan. Congratulations. Richard Logan. Magda Martas. Melanie Monteleone. Marcia Mosley. Ms. Elizabeth Knaff. Carla Nelson. Kathy Nissenoff. Eleanor Pizzarello. And I think that wraps this up. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Maria Rodriguez. For the team members who aren't here this evening, we're going to mail their certificates to them as well. Now we're going to recognize, wait, hold on one second, I think I did miss. Hold on, I did, I did, I did. Howard Rubenstein? I don't think, no, Sherry Streichler. You're out of order. Wasn't gonna let you retire. Congratulations.
Sherry, I will never forget the day that my son replied, "Hey, you took that to the outside of the school, you were our neighbors across the street." I had her.
I went out of order because of Streichler. I wanted to make sure you knew you were there. Sorry. You have a good one. Did we get Luz Savarisi? Nope. Lucia Scala? Dennis Scouin? Mark Stanton? Congratulations, Stan. Best wishes. Michael Stevens? Kathleen Tad? Lorraine Trevado Cantori? I think I saw Lorraine. Congratulations. Pablo Valda? Mr. Ramles?
Congratulations. All right. Congratulations. Now we're going to recognize 25 years of service. Jennifer Amabale? Madalita Andrade?
25 years.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Diana Arboleda? I'm sorry, Arboleda. Jeanine Lawson? Deborah Bannister? Congratulations. Went like that, right? Stephanie Cabrera? Liton Chu? Kathy Contrada? Ray Drack? Kristen Dwyer? Patricia Falcone Cortino? David Farrell? Congratulations, David. Jacqueline Forbes Machado? Dan Ferry? 25 years, Cole?
You look great.
Congratulations. Marcel Galagani? Sonya Gordon. Patricia Hogan. Magda Martas. Melanie Monteleone. Marsha Mosley. Ms. Elizabeth Knaff. Carla Nelson. Kathy Nissenoff. Eleanor Pizzarella. And I think that wraps this up. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Maria Rodriguez.[237.12][237.12](applause). For the team members who aren't here this evening, we're going to mail their certificates to them as well. Now, we're going to recognize. Wait, hold on one second. I think I did miss. Hold on, I did, I did, I did. Howard Rubenstein? I don't think. No, Sherry Streichler. You're out of order.[265.83][265.83](applause). Wasn't going to let you retire.
Sherry, I will never forget the day that my son retired. He took that trip outside the school, you were our neighbors across the street.
I went out of order because of Streichler. I wanted to make sure you knew you were there. Sorry.[300.52][300.52](applause). Yeah, but good luck. Did we get Luz Savarisi? Nope. Dennis Scouin? Best wishes. Michael Stevens? Lorraine Trevado Cantori? I think I saw Lorraine. All right. Congratulations. Now, we're going to recognize 25 years of service.
25 years.
Congratulations. Thank you.[442.81][442.81](laughter). Diana Arboleda. I'm sorry, Arboleda. Jeanine Lawson. Deborah Bannister. Stephanie Cabrera. Kathy Contrada. Ray Drack. Kristen Dwyer. Patricia Falcone Cortino. 25 years, Coach?
Hey, you look great.
Marcel Galagani? Priscilla Grito? Angela Legromandi? Richard Menorki? Joanne Murphy? Dana Quigley? Congratulations. I think Coach Howard Rubenstein is also getting 25 years and passing as well as retirement at the same time. It's like, duh. Congratulations. Allison Stone? Jose Torres? Vincy Vargas? Congratulations to all of our retirees and also congratulations to everybody who was recognized for 25 years of service. And thank you to Ms. Melendez for putting everything together.
So just, you know, just to speak on behalf of the board, congratulations to all of the retirees and we thank you for all that you've done. And remember, somewhere, some student is saying, that's my favorite teacher for, you know, for you. So, or my favorite, you know, person that took care of me one day. There's something that you did, all of you, that made a difference. So, thank you to the retirees for everything that you've given to our students and to our 25-year award recipients. We look forward to 25 more years and we thank you. We thank you too for all that you've done and what you will continue to do.
Just to thank you all for the ones who are retiring and for 25 years, the lives that you touched, what you dedicate yourselves to, to our community, to our children, it's wonderful. And I particularly want to point out to Richard Dillon, who not only gave to our kids, but he challenged me, he challenged my thought processes, he helped me to grow, and so I want to thank him for that.[911.12][911.12](applause).
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Richter. Next, we'll have public participation. Will there be any public participation tonight? Okay.
I had a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I wanted to, what's that?
Yes.
Yes, sorry. I wanted to welcome and thank Sinclair. I saw Sinclair is here with us this evening. Hi, Sinclair. And Delia, this is the last one of the year, and we wanted to thank you and recognize you for all of the amazing information and reports that you brought to the community throughout the entire academic year, in addition to all of the other amazing things you've been doing all year long. So, thank you so much, Sinclair.[968.25][968.25](applause). And Delia as well. Not to put you on the spot, but did you have a report today? Do you have an update?
I did.
Hello, hi, everyone. I'm Sinclair Harris, and I'm, as was said, I'm the board at Liaison along with Delia. We're here. And we're just here to, like, tell a little bit of good news about schools, what's happened in schools throughout the district. So, I'll start off with the elementary schools. So, at Post Road, they had during mid-May, the 4th graders visited Fort Montgomery, and they're really grateful for this learning experience that they got to have outside of the classroom. And they also welcomed incoming kindergartners to the Post Road family during their kindergarten roundup on May 23rd. Also, at Post Road, they had an amazing spring concert the same day, featuring the Post Road chorus, orchestra, and band. And they would like to give a special thanks to the music teachers for their dedication and their hard work. And grades 1 through 4 also had an amazing time at their field day. Luckily, the weather held up, and it was a beautiful day for them to spend with each other. And also, at Post Road, their STEM fair was on June 1st, and they showcased the work of students. They would also like to thank the Post Road parents and the PTA for their support and alignment to have this event. And 5th graders at Post Road had a fantastic field day here at White Plains High School. They played water games and other fun activities in the hot weather. They would like to also thank the PE teachers for organizing the event, and all the teachers, TAs, and parent volunteers who made the day really special and fun for them. Their girls on the run team at Post Road had an amazing race day. Coaches and family members and also the race day participants all showed up, and they celebrated the hard work of the girls on the run team. And at Post Road, they had their annual talent show on Friday, June 9th, and their annual Jenkins Award Ceremony was presented by the Post Road PTA to recognize the dedication and hard work of the Post Road community. And they would like to congratulate all the award-winning teachers, staff, and family members who were recognized for their dedication to the community. And now, going over to MAS. They had an inspiring assembly about persevering and having a growth mindset. The guest BMX rider empowered students to work hard and dream big. And they also held their annual end-of-year picnic on May 19th, and this brought the MAS family together. They also welcomed kindergartners and families to MAS on May 23rd for their kindergarten roundup. Highlands Middle School Select Choir came to MAS also to display their hard work, determination, leadership, and talent. And MAS would like to thank them for sharing their craft and giving an amazing visit for all of the MAS students. MAS 5th graders enjoyed their day at City Fields, and they made a lot of memories together. They'd like to thank the parents and the staff volunteers who showed up to make the day really fun. They also had a magical spring concert, and they celebrated the hard work of their band, their chorus, and their orchestra. And the MAS 5th graders also performed beautifully at their Beyond Broadway performance. They liked to thank the friends of White Plains Public Schools for making this possible for them. And also, at MAS, they had their first annual school carnival, and this was after they exceeded their school-wide reading challenge and just a little recognition of their hard work and their dedication to reading. And now, going over to Church Street. They selected the one and only Ivan as their book for the One School, One Book program. And they'd also like to thank the Church Street parents who were able to make it to their anxiety workshop with the school psychologist, Mrs. Daca, and this was part of their K-2 literacy workshop. The Highlands Select Choir also visited Church Street. They're really happy to see some alumni come back to the school and get to share it with the current elementary schools. And their 4th and 5th grade students showed off their skills in the spelling bee on May 31st, as was mentioned before. They'd like to congratulate Mathias, their spelling bee winner, and Adi, their runner-up. And the 3rd grade and 2nd grade also had their spelling bee on June 2nd. And the 5th graders had a wonderful field day at the high school as well. They enjoyed making new friends and also spending time with their old friends. And they'd like to thank, again, the parents and the teacher volunteers who made it possible. And also, we have Ridgeway. They had a fun spin to win Wednesday as a result of their Staff Appreciation Week. And their kindergarten roundup at Ridgeway was also a success, and the kindergartners got to see a little bit of a glimpse into next year would be like for them. And also, staff, students, and families had an amazing night at the Ridgeway Global Dinner and their carnival. And Ridgeway's 4th grade Girl Scout troop had a great time at Duck Donuts, and they got to learn about how a business is run, and they also got to learn how to make some really delicious donuts. So, thank you.[1288.83][1288.83](applause). So, I'll start with Highlands Middle School. So, first, the Common Circles exhibit at Highlands was dedicated in memory of Angel, a beloved security guard at that school. Also, the Highlands Middle School Select Choir visited MAS and had a great performance for the students, as well as the Advanced Art Show exhibit, which was a complete success with many of Ms. Hines' class showcasing their work. Moving on to White Plains High School, we want to congratulate the White Plains High School Honor String Ensemble on receiving a Gold with Distinction rating in the NISM Majors Festival. We're also extremely proud of the Tiger community coming together to celebrate the International Celebration Luncheon, thanks to all who helped make the event such a tremendous success with amazing food and an amazing night. And it was a great night, recognizing the amazing class of 2023 Scholars with over $175,000 being awarded. We're grateful for the community members and the organizations for the generosity. Rochambeau High School, so Rochambeau students spent the day cleaning up the Stony Hills Cemetery under the leadership of Social Studies teacher Elizlo Lugo, and they also held their art show with amazing artists and amazing paintings done by our students. And finally, we're moving on to athletics. We want to congratulate our Male and Female Athletes of the Year, Eunice Reggio and Isaiah Graham. Congratulations to all our Spring varsity teams that achieved Scholar-Athlete Team recognition, and congratulations to the White Plains baseball team for being placed on the walls of the athletic hallway at White Plains High School as league champs of 2023. So, that's it.
Sinclair, Delia, you have been wonderful liaisons, and you have saved me a lot of work by reporting on the amazing things that take place all throughout the school district each month. And, you know, as we head into what's going to be the last week, next week, of the school year, which is hard to believe, you know, I think we're all probably reflecting on all the amazing things that have happened over the course of the academic year. But, you know, not every day is an easy day. And as anybody who's been through school knows, there are challenges that arise. I think one of the things that stands out to me as a hallmark of the White Plains City School District is that when you do run into those challenging days, and we all do, that there are so many people around who want to support you and to try to make your day easier. That's a very special thing. And so, as we head off into next week and we think about moving up ceremonies and we think about commencement for the class of 2023, I think that spirit of family, of support, and of love will continue to live on in all of our students, both those who are going to be graduating and those who are going to be moving up. And a lot of thanks and appreciation needs to go out to everybody in the educational community, because regardless of the role we play, every single person in this school district, every one of us, has an opportunity to make the lives of our children and the lives of each other, our colleagues, better. And I think, you know, for myself personally, as I reflect in the academic year, that's truly a gift and something I think that the White Plains City School District excels at. So, thanks again to our student liaisons. Congratulations, we're going to miss you next year. And congratulations to everybody on a really amazing year. And if you thought that you had seen it all with the global pandemic, nope, Canadian wildfire smoke last week. You know, it wasn't easy, and I do want to offer thanks to our Mr. Stefanelli and the Physical Plant staff and everybody who worked so hard to make sure that all of our mechanical HVAC is up and running and working, and also to all of our building-level principals, the teachers, support staff members, food service members, everybody who worked to try to bridge that 72-hour stretch of difficulty as we all kind of, you know, navigated what was a pretty unique situation for, you know, at least in memorable history, right? Yeah. We also have, coming up in the summertime, we'll talk more about this as we get summer, strategic planning. And already, I want to thank everybody who's put forward their volunteer, their efforts to volunteer on the Strategic Planning Committee, and there'll be more coming about that in August. And of course, a very, very happy Father's Day to all of our White Plains City School District dads coming up on Saturday. And that concludes my report. Non-communicative.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we'll move into our agenda. We have summary action items, number 4 through 8. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. I abstain.
Understood. Congratulations, Bob.
I'd like to draw your attention to item 4B, donations, and we are grateful to accept the following donations from very generous benefactors. $39 donation to the Lois Van Epp Scholarship from Edward Beduzzi, a $500 donation to the Barbara O'Garrow Memorial Scholarship at White Plains High School, a $500 donation to the Morton Zucker Memorial Scholarship from Jeff Zucker, a $500 donation to the Lewis and Rose Maserow Scholarship Fund, a $1,000 donation to the Asian Heritage Scholarship at White Plains High School from the Huaxia Chinese School of Greater New York, Inc., a $1,000 donation to the Audrey Rogers Scholarship from Bonnie Vandola, a $1,000 donation to the Acts of Loving Kindness Award from Dr. David Elcott and Rabbi Shira Milgram, $1,000 donation to the David R. Colteese Memorial Fund from Daniel Colteese, a $2,500 donation to the Arthur Mickey Stagg Service Award, a $2,500 donation to the Mark Stagg and Steve Schell Business Achievement, a $5,000 donation to the Christian Gianola Science Scholarship at White Plains High School, a $5,000 donation to the Margaret L. Curz Memorial Scholarship from Mr. and Mrs. Robert Curz, Galileo Telescope donated to the Ridgeway School from Anthony Solakis, an Omex LED Binocular Compound Lab Microscope donated by Todd Reed, $750 donation from the White Plains Teachers Association for the 2023-2024 school year to cover the contractual rate for a total of 30 hours of summer curriculum planning for EDU 101 and EDU 103. The following donations are from Mrs. Teresa Stagg, $2,000, oh, I'm sorry, I already read these. The following donations were made to the Dorothy Ann Peters Memorial Scholarship, $1,985 and $650 from Andrea Robinson, $200 from Tatiana Flowers, $200 from Restless Restoration LLC, $200 from Carla Kaski, and $180 from Carol Lee Lashley. Thank you so much to all of our donors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rick. And as, you know, we are very fortunate in White Plains. The generosity is humbling and just so welcome and appreciated. Thank you. Next, we have our individual action items. We have the recommended authorization of the 2023-2024 tax warrant. May I have a motion?
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended action to accept the District-wide Safety and Emergency Management Plan and School Building Level Emergency Response Plan for the 2023-2024 school year. And we had an overview earlier during the hearing. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any other questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you again, Dr. Teich. Next, we have the recommended approval of the appointment of Michelle Schoenfeld, Board Special Projects District-wide. May I have a motion? This is for July first through December thirty-first, 2023. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now, we get to our board committee reports. But before we get to our board committee reports, we just want to acknowledge that tonight is Dr. Randy Stein's last official meeting with us as a colleague. And we are going to officially recognize Dr. Stein in our September meeting. But we just want to say to you, Randy, that, you know, the honor of sharing this valuable work with you on the board for fifteen years has been our pleasure. Your steadfast dedication to all things children, your no-nonsense approach when it comes to our children, and you always say it beautifully and very eloquently, our children are our most valuable resource. And no truer words could be said. We thank you for everything that you've bought and what you've done during your tenure on the board. The one bright light is that you're not leaving us, you're not going very far, you're going to participate on our finance committee as a community member. But know that, you know, I can just take a point of personal privilege. When I came here, I didn't know that, you know, we would become such great friends, we ran together, and it's just been an amazing time with you. Thank you. And I'm sure others may want to say something, but I just wanted to say that to start us off.
Let me just say something. I mean, I feel I'll say something soon. It has been a gift to me to be able to be on the board. It's anything related to our kids, that's been for me. It's been a pleasure. It's, I've been honored to be able to do that and to be part of this. So as much as it has always been for the kids and working for all, with all of you guys, it's really been a gift to be able to do that, and thank you.
You know, when you do this work, and this is my sixteenth year, when you do this work, you're not sure who you're going to serve with. You know that you have ideas what you would like to accomplish, and then I met Randy, Dr. Stein, and everybody else.
Randy works.
But Randy works. Okay, Randy. And everything that Rosemary said is true, her fierce determination to do what's right for all kids in the district, her bilingual ability, just her rational thought. And on a personal level, in addition to becoming good friends, here we go, I'm slightly hypochondriacal and she is Dr. Randy Stein. And I call Randy from time to time, I think I'm dying, but it's okay. It's good.
We all do. And navigating us through that, you know, that pandemic at its height, what a benefit and a gift to have a physician on our board where we had access to. And at no time did she say, I don't have time for that. She always had time. So.
Randy, I wrote something in the car for you. I hear, I just realized. So I did, I had this prepared, so we're doing something for her. Do something for you in September, too. But you were the first person eight years ago to reach out to me when I ran for the board and you could call me and just talk to me. And you became a mentor to me. You've been an incredible colleague. And we may have not agreed on every issue we discussed in private or in exec session, but you always emerged with the kids first and the district first, and your intent was always to leave it better than you found it. And hopefully, you can say that after fifteen years and we'll continue the work as a board. But like Rosemary said, you guided us through the pandemic. You've just been an incredible board member, so thank you.
Thank you.
Randy, thank you for fifteen years, right? Of really dedicated, committed board service. I have really appreciated working with you. I've appreciated your passion, but also your logical approach to issues and to challenges. But always, always students first. And I've just really appreciated the collegiality and having you as my colleague.
Thank you.
I'm going to jump in and say a lot of the same things that have already been said, Randy. It's the beauty coming at the end. And I think there's a lot of things that we've done together as board members. Certainly, we've been on many of the same committees. And like we said, like Kane said, we may not always agree on everything, but it doesn't mean we don't get along on things. There's a lot we do get along on. I think as a board, I think it's important for people to understand that we don't always agree on everything. But I think what we all can agree on is that we're pointing in the right direction for all of our students. And I think as a board, we trust each other and we trust our intentions that we're pointing in the right direction for our students. And working with you on the board, that's something that you reinforced and we knew and I knew every time we sat at this table, every time we sat at a committee, that that's exactly how we were going to handle our business as board members. And that's really important for all of us in getting our job done. I mean, you've been a wonderful colleague. We've been here for fourteen years together, which is amazing. We, you know, in fourteen years, we spend a lot of time with each other.
We do.
There's a lot of dinners and your husband, Jack, certainly has a sacrifice as well. We're not going to honor him right now. But again, it becomes a family affair. And I think one of the greatest pleasures certainly we have is the trust that the community places in us for our students. And I certainly feel very privileged to have had that opportunity to serve that time with you on this board. And we're looking forward to the rest of this month and certainly the meeting in September when we get to hazy a little bit.
Thank you for being part of our board family. We're all a family.
Randy, I do want to thank you and just let you know how much we appreciate your time, your dedication to our students, to our community. We've spent, well, I've only been here twelve years with you, but in that time.
Just got here.
In that time, you have been a trusted colleague, my own personal medical go-to. Part of the family, most importantly, a very special friend. And I want to thank you for all of that. And I guess the best part of being the last one is that I get to remind everybody that although Randy's leaving the board, she's not going very far. She's going to remain on call for all of us. And I know that she'll always be there to jump in whenever we need an extra hand. So thank you.
It's one of those rare times I don't have much to say. And sarcasm is my second language, and I don't have any today. Thank you so very much, everybody, because you're just like, I don't have anything else to say.
I get to be last.
Oh, no.
So I'm going to get another chance to talk about you like everybody in September officially. But my goodness, the opportunity to serve this board and this community with you being an integral part of it has been tremendous. And I know, you know, I speak for all of my colleagues. Randy, I mean, you're a giant, not in stature. But in terms of board service and leadership and approaching problems and challenges in a really pragmatic way, and I suppose there's a lot of medicine, you know, being a physician is part of that, but ruling out, right? Ruling things out before jumping to conclusions. Like Charlie mentioned, you know, before we immediately rise to the highest level of inference, we're going to first take what's coming. And you've demonstrated that countless times, and it has been a real, genuine pleasure to work alongside you. And I have to say, that day that I called you up sheepishly and said, hey, doc, my throat kind of hurts. Could you look at it? And you came in in full gear with the strep test and everything. There's no, that just doesn't happen. So, you know, we'll celebrate and everything. But on behalf of, you know, the children, our colleagues all throughout the school district, certainly our colleagues here right now, just thanks. Thanks for always being there and for not only being a great leader, but for leading with your heart as well as your brain. It's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, if, you know, do we have any committee reports? Anyone wants to report out on anything?
Curriculum, Matt. We met at Highlands. Yeah, we were on location. We were at the last, at the last site of our Common Circles, and it was awesome. I didn't get to stay for the Common Circles because I ran over to Broadway over at MAS. But during our quick conversation, we talked about incubator U, where we had the pitch here at the high school. We also learned from Rocco that the kids went on to the regionals that night and where they, or the next day, where they ended up winning first place against, I think, Byram Hills in another school district, which is just incredible. That's our first year doing that program. So thank you, Deb Hand, thank you, Rocco.
And I use prototype.
And the little, yeah.
That's right.
What is it called, the drop?
The drop.
The drop.
And you're here, too.
And I'm still here.
And he's hydrated.
Well hydrated.
And Common Circles, just that you mentioned it, is having another open house, I understand, on Wednesday as well at Highlands.
On finance, we did the discussion of public trust with an overview of our investments and how they are handled. And the presentation is really good here.
Says it.
It says it all. It's always a masterclass when I go to finance, and I just appreciate that. Also, we all had our HR meeting, but it's nothing that we can discuss. Any other?
Special ed, there were conflicts, so we didn't meet, but we did start reviewing ourselves the code of conduct. And Deb Algarth is available for any questions on that.
And I have to say, at our HR meeting, Kane showed incredible, was incredible, and you were at that meeting, your daughter had a performance that night, and you were still at HR.
Yes, yes, yes. So.
And if I could have just also mentioned, from the New York State School Boards Association perspective, which I mentioned earlier, just to remind everyone that there are conferences and things that NISP is organizing and sponsoring. So if anyone has any questions, there's a leadership event at the end of July and at the end of October in Buffalo, there is the NISP Annual Convention, which will come to New York City the following year. So any questions, just let me know.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So may I have a motion to adjourn to exec session to discuss personnel matters as well as litigation, potential litigation? We may come back out and vote in public, but at this time, we need to adjourn to exec session. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're back on.
So the other thing that I neglected to do is I didn't thank John Shepherd for taping us all here and making our meetings more accessible and doing a great job and going through the ups and downs with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more addendum.
Individual action item.
On the individual action item, and that is number D, letter D. We have the recommended approval of the amendment to the policy for non-represented employees effective July first, 2023. May I have a motion?
Do you need a motion to add it to the agenda first?
Okay. May I have a motion to add?
Let me do that. I'll make that motion.
A motion to add addendum.
To the agenda.
To the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, the recommended action is the approval of the amendment to the policy for non-represented employees effective July first, 2023. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, let's adjourn to executive session to discuss.
Do we need another motion?
And action will not be taking, no further action will be taken. We will be in executive session.
For the purposes.
Of discussing potential litigation.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Happy Father's Day.